March 9th, Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Will we please take the roll?
Ford?
Here.
Allison Aspie?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Moverower?
Here.
Erickson? Petchel?
Mr. Petchel indicated he would not be joining us this evening.
Okay, thank you. Paul Mary?
Here.
Here. Present six.
All right, and Councilmember Ford will lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Next, we have citizen's statements to council. And we do have one email that came in from Tina Hafeman. This is regarding the Pillars. She was attempting to send us a link regarding an annual report by Pillars and the Fox Cities with a model for addressing homelessness and housing affordability. So, thank you for that email. Pam, did we have any others besides Tina for general citizen's statements?
We did not.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. And I believe we have four people registered this evening. Who is the first one, Pam?
The first one is Brett and Molly Hildebrandt for item number 28, Resolution 21130.
So Brett and Molly, are you here with us?
Yes, we are. Can you hear us?
Yes. Welcome.
Yes, yeah, thanks for having us and letting us be able to share quick words regarding the Mouse Kimball project. That's what we're here to talk about. Really, we just kind of wanted to reiterate, you know, you know, we shared, you know, a letter with you guys, sharing our hearts for the project. And, you know, we went through multiple meetings with you guys. And we just want to say that we're, you know, we're hoping that this can be a start of a long-term relationship from this project with you guys and that we're really excited. And we're hoping for your guys' support. And just want to say thank you for all the help and support you've given us through this this journey that we've been on with you guys. So just want to say thank you.
Thank you. And who is next?
Our next one is Christine Witty for item number 26, Ordinance 21128.
Ms. Witty?
Yes.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Should I start? I'm not sure what to do right now.
Yes, yes, please go ahead. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Oh, okay, you're welcome. I realize that the city has listened to the city council, has listened to some of the hazards of wearing face masks. And I just wanted to talk about what I'm the most concerned about. My biggest concern about wearing face mask is the breathing in of the carbon dioxide. Breathing in the excess carbon dioxide, it actually increases your chances of getting cancer. I was surprised when I read that. Carbon dioxide or CO2 is a waste product that we naturally produce when we exhale and breathing. And that gas becomes trapped within our face masks. And breathing that CO2 is harmful because it elevates our CO2 levels in our body. And it can actually produce hypercapnia. And that's a condition that arises from having too much carbon dioxide in our blood. And a lot of people are feeling lightheaded and faint and feeling smothered. And I noticed this in my mother especially when I have to take her to the store and she wears a mask. She just, she's 88 right now. And she, she looks like she's going to pass out and she gets dizzy and gets a headache. But anyway, I did attach some links if anybody wants to fact-check what I just said. Because I don't want to be reporting anything, saying anything that isn't, you know, factual. Another, another one of my, the negative effects is just the effect that it has on our immune system. I really feel that God gave us a good filtration system when He designed us and that we don't need something as unnatural as a mask covering both our mouth and our nose. Our immune systems were designed to keep all these germs and viruses at bay. And for me, I feel like this is one of those use it or lose it things. And I just don't want to lose the effectiveness of my immune system as a senior. I also, I decided to look up to see what the Wisconsin Constitution said about it. And I, do you have the paperwork that I sent about that? I had, I had sent some forms in. I just pretty much went over what it was. The Public Health Emergency under 33202, number 16. And it tells us that a public health emergency, it means the occurrence or the imminent threat of an illness or a health condition that meets all of the following criteria. And the criteria are A, it's believed to be caused by bioterrorism or a novel or previously controlled eradicated biological agent. And B, possesses a high probability of any of the following, a large number of deaths or serious or long-term disabilities among humans. And two, a high probability of widespread exposure to the biological, chemical, or radiological agent that creates a significant risk of substantial future harm to a large number of people. And I'm not seeing this in COVID. Actually, SARS-CoV-2, that number two, shows that this is not a novel virus. And, and then on top of it, Senator was wondering, well, what's the seriousness now as compared to what it was? And I went to all of our websites that were available, the Winnebago County Health Department, the CDC website, and the Department of Health Services. And I did include in my email the form, the charts of the most recent, you know, most recently what's going on. And as of March 4th in Winnebago County, the Health Department said that there was a total of 14 COVID patients in the entire, hospitalized in the entire Fox Valley. Every graph that I looked at, it just shows that COVID is not any longer an imminent threat doing, putting a large number of people at high risk. So I'm just asking, in addition to what the Constitution says, and I know there are a lot of other side, harmful side effects of masking. I'm just asking that the council please consider looking at how far we've come, where we're at now, and how small the risk is, where this mask mandate is. I'm thinking that people should have the choice of wearing a mask if they want to, and the choice of the vaccination. And I really believe that eating healthy along with taking supplements like vitamin C, D, and zinc, washing their hands, et cetera, that I, at this point, it feels like that really should be enough. And that's just, that's really all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening, Ms. Witty. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And do we have Mr. Levinson or Mr. Mickelson next?
Michael Levinhagen for item number 26, Ordinance 21128.
All right.
Levinhagen, yes, go ahead, welcome.
All right. I can't get my camera to work right now. Oh, there we go. Well, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Michael Levinhagen and I live at 1328 Grand Street. I'm sure you're all aware that there's all sorts of conflicting evidence about masks, the effectiveness of masks, the dangers of masks. And I could go into a lot of different details. But I want to look at specifically, you know, some of the details of the ordinance itself, as well as some of the other things that, first of all, the justifications, the wheresses, as well as the ordinance itself and how it's worded. So when you declared the state of emergency last year, March 18th, 2020, I think the council acted very wisely. And I think you're doing due diligence in what you're trying to do to protect the city and the, our, the citizens from what we at that time didn't know much about. So that's a totally valid thing. And so you did declare a state of emergency last year. I'm not sure if you would consider actual data and actually what's going on today with the information we have. You would consider it as much of an emergency as you did last year when you were justifying Resolution number 2103. There's also been some articles that have come out that you need to consider as far as basing your, your state of emergency and continuing the state of emergency, that there was actually a recent peer-reviewed article that just, on COVID-19 data collection, comorbidity and federal law, that is stating that and documented that according to the CDC on August 23rd, for 6% of deaths, COVID-19 was the only cause of the reported cases. In other words, of the 500-plus thousand, only 6% were directly only by, caused by COVID. And they, they actually documented and told that if there were any other comorbidities, the number one thing would be COVID. With that type of reporting, we would have had significant number of deaths had they used the same standard that they were using up until August 20th, August 23rd. I mean, for COVID, when this first, when they first put in these standards, we would have had similar death rates for influenza A, influenza B for the past several years. But that isn't how they were recording the deaths. So we need to go back. In fact, right now, there's a, they're taking the CDC and exiting the Department of Justice to review this because these new standards that they put out for COVID-19, actually, there was a potential violation of federal law. So please, before we act rashly, and here's the thing. I think when COVID-19 first hit, there was a very lot, a lot of conflicting information, confusing. We didn't know what SARS-CoV-19 actually was about. And I was one that I, I was totally locked in, locked down. And I wore my mask if I did go out. But here's what's happened over the last year. If, we've created this moralization of COVID-19. And when you look at how we're responding, it's almost as though people elevated COVID-19, the prevention of spread of COVID-19, and everything else going on with it compared to any other thing that's elevated. So denial of freedom, denial of small, trashing small businesses and different things like that have come secondary to what we perceive as this terrible threat of COVID-19. Now, I'm not saying there's not a virus. I'm not saying that people aren't affected by it. And I, please don't hear me say that. But we also have to elevate and consider unintended consequences of what we're doing. And so there are very clearly documented evidence of people wearing masks that, I, in fact, I know of a dental hygienist, hygienist who's a friend that works in a parodontic office, that they're having significant number of cases now in the last six months of what they call mask mouth.
Mr. Levinhagen, you're at your five minutes. Can you conclude your remarks, please?
Okay, so first of all, the reasons why we're doing it, the cases are not significantly high. The death rates aren't what we say. There's no need to do it. The second thing that you need to consider, this is not an enforceable ordinance. You even say that you're trying to suggest, I would suggest if you want to do it, I would suggest a recommendation, you know, and the department, you know, our DHS or, you know, make a recommendation, put this ordinance out as, this is as a community, what we should be doing compared to trying to implement this unenforceable. You waste resources when we could be using our resources much better. So thank you very much, I just, for my time. But I, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have one more person who is speaking to 128?
Yes, we do. Matt Mickelson?
Mr. Mickelson, are you with us? Matt Mickelson, are you with us on the call? Well, perhaps if Mr. Mickelson is having technical difficulties, if he comes in soon, we can allow him to give his comments. All right, we will then move on to consent agenda. They have a motion and a second for consent.
Some of, second, Ford?
All right, I didn't catch who was first. Was that Deputy Mayor Crowsey or, yes? And seconded by Ford, thank you. Discussion on consent agenda.
Go ahead, City Manager Roloff.
I just wanted to point out that item number 13, Resolution 21-115, has been withdrawn by staff.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. Just wanted to ask one question for City Manager, just to, for the public on 21-113, the Riverwalk. If you could just give an update of what's the bigger picture looking like? What's the timeline looking like with the Riverwalk? Thanks.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Mr. Davis is also here in case he needs to do any supplementing of anything I have to say. This is the next phase in our Riverwalk that will take us from South Main Street over to the north-south portion of Pioneer Drive, which essentially gets us to the front door of Pioneer Island. And that's, that's been the next phase all along. We do have a Riverwalk plan that Mr. Davis could certainly provide a little more detail on. But that's the purpose of this one. The next phase would be the island itself. That is governed by an agreement between the city and the State of Wisconsin regarding when that portion of the Riverwalk would get done. It would be done in conjunction with any development on the island. We've been waiting quite a while for that. We still are. We get people every once in a while coming in inquiring. And we'll continue to do that. But we are under, currently in agreement that within two years after development on the island, we would be required to do that. That's essentially what we're having discussions with any potential suitors for the island, that how would we get that done as cost-effectively as possible? Because it could potentially be expensive. Mr. Davis can give details about this section of the Riverwalk or any other part of the Riverwalk plan if any council member would like that.
Mr. Davis, by any chance, I seem to recall that someone wanted to see kind of an overview. I don't know if we have any visuals on that as to where the missing links are.
I don't have any visuals tonight. We certainly, as Mr. Roloff indicated, we have a map that shows all the links, so that all the segments of the Riverwalk on our website. This particular piece would be the extension that we started on the South Shore. That, if you recall, it starts all the way over at Wisconsin Avenue and the Senior Center and goes along the South Shore, have a nice portal that we're also including, a railroad portal that we included on the Bulwark's property. There's another piece of that portal that'll be installed as part of this project. We put in the Riverwalk all along Morgan District down to the Oregon Street Bridge. We do have to kind of skirt around Sweetwater and go by Green's Porthouse. But then we come back to the river there at Sixth and South Main. And then we're along the water. And this is the section we're talking about trying to complete now. This would extend from Main Street over, past the CN Railroad tracks. And as Mr. Roloff indicated, long-term, this will include Pioneer Island and Pioneer Drive all the way down to the South Breakwater of the Marina. So it's quite an extensive plan.
So just to be clear then, this amendment for the Professional Services Agreement is, I'm sorry, the approval of the Professional Services Agreement is for that design and engineering permitting and construction documentation. But the actual construction would not take place, did I understand it correctly, until sometime within the two years after development?
In this particular case, I, we're working with finance to figure out when we can do this section from Main Street to the railroad tracks. I'm hoping we can actually start that in '21 and potentially finish that in concert with RDA's RFP that we sent out for that redevelopment site. As Mr. Roloff indicated, Pioneer Island is all, depends on the timing of development on the island. And at this point, I don't have anything to report on the timing for development on the island.
And you can see from the screen share, whoever did that, thank you very much. You can see the, it's right near where it says South Shore East Zone. That's the area where we're proposing to get the Riverwalk designed. And staff has been identifying funding sources because as we reported in the, in the staff memo, we did not receive a grant this year. This was the first time in a number of years that we had a very good, long run about that. And so it'll come down to, are we going to continue to fund these projects even when we don't get a state grant? There's more competition than there has been in the past. I think we were taking advantage of the grant program many, you know, for many years. But now more communities are taking advantage of it. So it's going to be tougher competition.
All right, thank you. Other council members for consent agenda items? All right, I do want to pull 21-110, approving the change order. I'm sorry, 21-111, approve amendment for Professional Services Agreement with Smith Group for Phase One Initial Development of Lake Shore Park. And if we could take the roll on the consent agenda minus 21-111?
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Aspie?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Moverower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Karen Six?
Okay. So is Mr. Maurer here?
I'm here.
Yes, Mr. Maurer. Maybe you could just go into a little bit of a summary on what 21-111 relates to, especially since we just had our last Parks Advisory Board last night and what that $107,710 goes towards and the purpose.
Sure. I'll just talk about a couple of items I had in my council memo. Back in September of 2020, the city entered into an agreement with Smith Group to design and engineer the Four Seasons Building at the Lake Shore Park. The Parks Board, as part of the Park Master Plan, gave direction that the Four Seasons Building was something that they wanted to focus on as the first project. It's also something that was included in the, the master plan for the park. And I'm going to jump to some numbers because part of that planning process, the Republican Parks Board in the master plan had talked about a facility that would accommodate 120 to 150-person assembly or a group, basically. So as we started into the project and took a look at some of the site conditions and as well as the, the budget, the budget started coming in a little bit higher than we had expected. So we had discussed with Smith Group that maybe we need to cut back on the size of the building a little bit and try to focus maybe on a building that would accommodate 100 people. And when I talk about 100 people at that time, it was for the, the main assembly room. When we brought that back to the Parks Board in February, there was some discussion that they would like to see some cost estimates in order to get the building back up to a larger size. So I had Smith Group provide some cost estimates. And what I had them do was break it down, not only on the capacity for the assembly room, but also the entire building. So they gave us cost estimates. Again, we were working at 100-person assembly room, which would be about 122 for the entire building, I believe. There was a request to find out if we went down to 75-person assembly room capacity, which would get us up to about 92 people in the entire building. And then we asked for the 125 assembly room capacity and 150. And those would take us up to, at the 125 assembly room, up to about 150 building capacity. And the 150 assembly room capacity would get us to about 180 roughly for the building. So the Parks Board, last night, we had discussion about the cost of doing so. And I presented that information that I just shared with you, along with the construction cost estimates. Construction cost estimates that we provided include all of the design costs from the beginning through the construction administration costs. So the number is all-inclusive at this point, including contingencies and construction management. So the Parks Board at their meeting last night had some good discussion of which direction they would prefer to go. And the majority of the Parks Board suggested that we continue to move forward with a building with assembly room capacity of 125 and a building capacity of 150. And that's what we had provided in the memo. And the estimate for Smith Group's amendment to our agreement is the $107,710. And a lot of that comes down to, again, site work in addition to the increased project scope and budget. So the budget went from about 1.8 or 2 million up to about 3.4 at this point. So that was the direction that the Parks Board provided last evening.
And Mr. Maurer, could you explain to council too that by approving this particular resolution and that increase in scope, what those, the difference is between the originally planned 100 for the assembly room up to the 125? I believe it was like around half a million, a little less than that maybe, including their fees and the extra costs for that Four Seasons Building capacity increase?
I can, I can provide the, the cost estimates for each of those levels? Is that what you're asking, Mayor, for? Okay, so basically, we were working on the building, the assembly room capacity of 100 people. The projected cost of that was $3,363,000 roughly. The 125-person assembly room capacity with building capacity of 150, it's $3,440,000. And then if we went up to the 150, assembly room and 182 total building capacity, that number jumps to the $3,727,000.
All right, thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
Do other council members have other questions? So there was also some concern that was expressed, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moverower, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, no real questions. I think this is, I think it's a good idea. I think it's the right thing to do. We only get to do this once. Adding on to it later, after, if we come back to it saying, hey, we didn't do it right. We went too small. It's going to cost even more later. And I think this, this facility at that spot, it's the right thing to do for increasing that. It is a bit, you know, it's a, it's a bullet to bite in terms of the cost right now. But I've got full faith in staff to figure out how we're going to do that. But this is, this increase has changed. The increased capacity is, is a good thing for that area. So it's going to be a great facility right there.
It is my understanding that Mr. Van Gompo and Mr. Roloff gave support in that they were able to, or would be able to find this extra money for that project. Mr. Roloff, could you explain, or Mr. Van Gompo?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The, some of the council members who were back on in the council in 2017 may recall that we had put together a funding source for the infrastructure to serve the Oshkosh Corporation Road and Utilities to get in there, to that site. Corporation road and utilities to get in there to that site. And due to the excellent management of the project by Public Works Director James Robbie and his staff, we're about $2 million under budget for that project. So Mr. Van Gompo took a look at potential uses, particularly in that area, since that's in the same vicinity as the Oshkosh Corporation development. And we believe we can provide a, a good share of the additional costs for the larger facility through that. Not all of it. It will require some fundraising, and Mr. Mauer may need to prioritize some projects, particularly over at Rainbow Park. But I, I feel confident that with his fundraising efforts, getting sponsorships, things of that nature, that we can pull this off. I don't know, Russ, if you have any other additions to that?
Mr. City Manager, you kind of hit everything that I was going to say. I've been working closely with Mr. Mauer on finding other revenue sources to lessen the impact on our debt issuance, and we believe we have identified that. So I'm comfortable with moving ahead with the design phase of this project.
So I just wanted to bring to light with this item, again, this presupposes that we would expand that footprint and also share that there were some concerns expressed at former Parks Board meetings and, and by a couple of folks with regard to expanding the footprint and that additional expense. It's a wonderful project. It's very exciting. I do want to give Mr. Mauer credit. I had asked whether or not expanding that footprint for the assembly event area would increase our need for parking spaces, because there's also been concerns expressed about additional paved areas in that, impervious surface areas. And he said he checked with the planning department and they believed that they would not need to increase the parking area to accommodate that. But there were still some concerns regarding the perception of the, the event space or the assembly area, maybe somewhat of an imbalance in terms of, you know, public accessibility. So just wanted to bring that to council's attention, that, you know, if we do approve this, then we are also approving, you know, that additional in the future. Do other council members have any questions? All right, please call the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, thank you. And our next item is pending ordinance 21-125, amend various sections of Chapter 30 zoning ordinance to add transitional residential housing plan commission recommends approval. Can I have a motion and a second for 21-125?
I moved.
Mr. Mugrower and a second by?
I'll second.
Councilmember Ford? Discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yes, I'd like to offer a amendment, make a motion to change the language in Section 10 of this ordinance from transitional residential housing with more than eight persons in the institutional residential land use definition to more than six persons in the institutional residential land use definition.
Motion to amend to six in Section 10 by Ford, do we have a second?
I'll second it, and then I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Mugrower seconds, and go ahead with your question.
Thank you. City Attorney Lawrence, is that sufficient enough to change eight to six throughout the entire thing, or should we clarify that better for you?
We understand that that's changing it throughout, so yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. That's, that was my only question on that.
Yep.
And let's, are there any other questions on that amendment? Councilmember Erickson? No? Okay. I saw hand movement, so, all right. So let's take the roll then on amending, yes, Councilmember Ford?
Can I explain it at least?
Yes, please.
Yes, all right, good. I like to, yeah. So some of the rationale here, and certainly that was a good question from Councilmember Mugrower, that was, that was the intent, to change it throughout the, the codes. So some background here, Councilmember Mugrower and I met with city staff, and bottom line, because this is a zoning change being made through an ordinance, we all agreed it makes sense to have the threshold for transitional housing to be bumped up to the institutional, be matched with the number that triggers a boarding house under the zoning code, which is six or more unrelated adults living together. So we went back and forth on the idea of eight, which was tied, like I said, to the building codes, and concluded that six makes more sense, since we have a precedent right there in our zoning codes, and this is a zoning change.
Thank you for adding that. It's my understanding that that would make it more consistent and in some instances, perhaps a little more, Mr. Lyons, I think, referenced agreeable with, like you said, the references to our boarding home, boarding house ordinances, correct?
That's my understanding, I was asking me or Mark Lyons.
Mr. Lyons?
You could unmute Mark.
Yes.
Sorry, yep, I just making sure it was directed at me. Yes, Mayor, it would make it a consistent six with our rooming house definition within the zoning code. And also make it consistent with how we define families in terms of those numbers.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you to Councilmembers Ford and Mugrow for working on that with staff. I know that some of the residents had expressed some interest in this, and thank you to City Mayor, or City Attorney Lawrence for the work along with Mr. Lyons. So if we could take the roll on the amendments?
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, and now we will consider that ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance 21-125 as amended. We'll need a motion and a second for discussion as amended.
Nope, already on the floor.
It's on the floor.
Got it. Any further discussion? All right, let's take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, next is ordinance 21-126, designate the intersection of Nevada Avenue and Grove Street as a two-way stop. Do we have a motion and a second for that?
I moved.
Second, all right, Councilmember Mugrower and Erickson. And discussion for 21-126. Seeing none? Oh, wait, Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll just say real quick, that's right, right in my neighborhood, and it's definitely needed, so I know it's appreciated by the, the residents around here. So thank you.
Yes, my understanding, there were some crash data that, that showed there were a significant, a significant number of incidents there.
I even got to see one, yep.
Well, I think my daughter had a car that got T-boned and totaled there, so I would agree. Certainly, let's see, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
Our next ordinance, 21-127, create ordinance to regulate ambulance and medical transport. And just to note that there were some clerical corrections on that as well earlier today. Do we have a motion and a second for 21-127?
I moved.
Second.
Mugrower and Allison Osby, discussion. Is Chief Stanley here with us? I see Oshkosh Fire.
I have, excuse me, I am here.
Uh, yes, Chief Stanley, do you want to just give a little brief overview of this? I know we spoke to this at our last meeting, but for those who didn't catch it.
Yeah, this will allow us to continue to be the, the primary provider of emergency medical services and ambulance services for 911 calls in the city, you know, in the interest of public safety and the health and well-being of our community, so that we can maintain that high-level standard of care, have continuity in equipment, services, training, et cetera.
All right, thank you. Other council members' questions? Discussion, all right, let's call the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, moving on to new ordinance, or sorry, pending ordinance 21-128, create ordinance to require face coverings in response to COVID-19 coronavirus emergency services. Shall we have a motion and a second?
I moved.
So moved, second.
Erickson and Deputy Mayor Crowsey, discussion. All right, I believe Mr. Guerin is here with us from the County Health Department too, if council members will note, in case there are questions. Obviously, we have had a number of discussions on the city mask ordinance, and this one is somewhat new. If City Attorney Lawrence would just share what the intent and purposes in terms of, this is a somewhat different format than what we've considered in the past, although it is our second reading, but it's different than what we've proposed in the past, and this goes into effect in the event the statewide is overturned or there is an absence of a countywide mask ordinance.
I'm not, I guess I'm not clear on what you're asking me. What, what you said is correct. It goes into, into effect only if there is no state or county, I guess.
Yes.
By following the question, I'm sorry.
My apologies. So one of the individuals that spoke earlier referenced statutes 323, and I believe they were referencing public emergency. Can you just give us kind of a, an explanation of the distinction here? With the 323 reference earlier and what we're doing with this one?
I'm still not following the question, I apologize. The, the ordinance is based on your emergency powers. We are, the county has the health department powers, so this would be under the city's general ability to act for the health, safety, and welfare and of the, of the citizens.
And we've referenced 32314, I believe, in there.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
The third whereas clause, Madam Mayor, references Section 323. The, the person who spoke said the Constitution, it's state statutes that grants us that authority by ordinance or resolution for health, safety, and welfare, as the city attorney referenced. So that's the authority under which the city is operating this ordinance.
And it's my understanding too that tonight, we also need to perhaps consider a period of time or a date in which this would end, and there's been recommendations for, you know, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. There's been some suggestions about ending it May 1st or June 1st. But other council members have questions or discussion items for Mr. Guerin? Council, Deputy Mayor Crowsey?
Thank you. Not so much for Mr. Guerin, but I would be okay with like a 30-day timeframe on it, and obviously council can come back every two weeks. If it's two weeks after the state would go out, we can make a decision at that point to extend it. So I mean, we're here every two weeks. This is just a safety net for if it would stop on a, on a Monday or Wednesday, not around council, so we'd continue our mask mandate. So I'm open for discussion on 30 days. Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had provided the council with a memo a couple of weeks ago regarding the section, the effective date duration, which is on page 204 of your budget, or excuse me, your agenda document for this evening. You know, Deputy Mayor Crowsey suggesting 30 days. I would suggest if you want a 30-day, that we put a specific date on that, and I would suggest April 15th, because April 13th is your next council meeting, that would give you the ability to, the, the council meeting before it would expire. Otherwise, I would suggest either a May 1st or a June 1st deadline. It's sort of 60-ish and 90-ish, so giving a date certain rather than people having to do the math of putting in 30 days and when was it adopted and things like that, it'd be very clear in the ordinance that way. And the city attorney and I discussed this, and we thought that inserting a specific date rather than a number of days was preferable for the public to better understand the expiration date. So that would be my suggestion. Whatever days you pick, it's entirely up to council. It just, you want to give yourselves ample time to take action prior to any expiration.
Deputy Mayor Crowsey, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, um, can we not have in the language 30 days after the state mandate would be withdrawn? I mean, that's when the 30 days would start, not starting right now. Thank you.
This is the city, I would not recommend that, just because you don't, you don't know what, if the state mandate is withdrawn, that may mean that there's no longer a need to have it. So to have it automatically come in at that point may not make sense without knowing why it's, it's coming out.
Just a follow-up, thank you. States have withdrawn their mask mandates and other states and communities have adopted citywide mandates still, so I would just think that this could possibly just be set in place if it passes, that it would just start at that point, because every city's different. Like, obviously, Oshkosh is different than a rural community, Milwaukee's different than Oshkosh.
The way this, Madam Mayor, if I might, the way this was structured was originally there was a concern that we would have to bring back a, an ordinance on a moment's notice if the state order was somehow reversed. And given the, what had been happening down in Madison between the executive and legislative branch, City Attorney Lawrence identified some languages, that language for this ordinance that would basically put our ordinance in second position or third position, depending on how many other entities put an order, put an order in place. The county doesn't have one, the state does, ours is in second position. Staff is suggesting that we have a date that our ordinance would no longer have an impact regardless of what happens with the state. So if the state were to lift it prior to our expiration date, ours would still be in place. If, if ours expired and the states was still in effect, the council could either extend If, uh, if ours expired and the states was still in effect, the council could either extend it or just let it go and wait for the state to run out. It gives the council more flexibility without rushing to do a meeting with twenty-four hours notice that might be perceived as, uh, as rushing this through. It's in place so that, um, everybody's aware that we can do that. That was the logic that we took from the last council discussion on this, which is why we worded it the way we did.
And I believe, uh, Chief Stanley, um, had indicated in our last meeting, when we were talking about a number of days versus a specific date, um, you know, there was more of a comfort level, uh, looking at it, you know, like a kind of a ninety-day horizon. And, um, if, um, if Chief Stanley would speak to that again, or did we just lose him? I saw him on the screen and now I don't.
Yeah, I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay, uh, yes, and then Councilmember Ford, uh, Chief.
Yeah, that certainly would be my comfort level, you know, while we are seeing increases in vaccinations statewide. But, you know, we, we heard this morning that, uh, Winnebago County right now is about one percent vaccinated. So, you know, until we can continue vaccinations, you know, maintain low numbers, I think it'd be prudent to, to have that date rate, or the, the number of days on there.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, based on our discussion at the previous meeting, um, I think May first makes, makes the most sense. I, I understand what, uh, Chief Stanley had said at the, the previous meeting about the time it's going to take for vaccines to, um, to catch up. But then I, I think back to what I had said and what Councilwoman Erickson had said about the importance of us being held accountable at, in regular timeframes, and I think sixty days or close to sixty days with May first is a reasonable, uh, time for us to have that safety net in place, but then be forced to revisit it, um, and get the public's, uh, input on whether or not we, we extend something. So that would be my preference.
All right, so we have April fifteenth, we have May first, anyone else? Councilmember Mookrour.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to appreciate, uh, just acknowledge, um, Councilmember Ford's statement right there, because, um, I think that's a big thing, is that this council is held accountable and does report back to the, to the people that governs, or that it's here to represent, um, on a regular interval on, on this particular topic. It's obviously, it's a hot one. And I think May first, if you look at the calendar, May first looks a lot, um, looks like a good date because of how it falls, uh, also the publication of any of our, uh, orders, uh, and the timeframes with those things. I'm still going to vote against it no matter what. But the sixty days makes a lot, or excuse me, the May first date makes a lot of sense in terms of the timing. So I'll be supportive of, of May first, or I'll even make the motion if it needs to happen, but, um, May one makes a lot of sense.
Uh, City Manager, and then, uh, Councilmember Alison Ozby.
Just a point of clarification, I pulled up the memo that I sent the council on February twenty-fourth. This is just being a little fussy. The, uh, expiration dates staff recommended weren't the first of the month, it was the last day of the month, so April thirtieth or May thirty-first. And I apologize, uh, but before a motion got on the floor, I wanted to make sure council, uh, and City Attorney Lawrenson, that's what we were discussing. It was the last day of the month, so, uh, you know, eleven fifty-nine PM on, uh, April thirtieth would be our recommendation.
Councilmember Alison Ozby. Can you unmute?
Madam Mayor, I was curious if Chief Stanley would be able to tell us, given that there is nothing that, um, there is no mandate through the county, and we only get county numbers, and we're considering this for the city. Out of, say, the last seven or fourteen-day rolling average, or just even, you know, just the straight up seven to fourteen days, out of the county numbers of, you know, approximately thirteen to eighteen cases we're seeing per day, how many of those are actually city of Oshkosh?
Yeah, I don't know that I could definitively tell you that off the top of my head. You know, I do look at the, the daily reports and, you know, historically through this whole event, it's been about a fifty-fifty of, uh, how many are in Oshkosh versus how many are in the rest of Winnebago County, which, you know, is pretty evenly distributed statistically based on our population. So, you know, while the numbers remain low in the, the county and the, in the city of Oshkosh, uh, you know, I would attribute a lot of that to what we're doing right.
And, um, I'll just point out, too, um, I'm going to ask Mr. Guerin, since he's here. Every Thursday, when that Winnebago County update comes out, there are numbers by municipalities. And, uh, it's my understanding that, um, you know, it, it's broken out by like Oshkosh, Nina, Amro, Fox Crossing. Mr. Guerin, could you, uh, maybe address Councilmember Alison Ozby's question about the city numbers?
Yeah, I, and Madam, I, I did pull up that report if, if Mr. Guerin doesn't have it.
I just looked those numbers up quick, and it appeared that, uh, fifty cases in the last two weeks were city of Oshkosh out of a two-hundred-and-six cases for the total county. So roughly twenty-five percent of all the county cases were in Oshkosh. Oshkosh has had a slightly lower rate recently of, of cases or a burden compared to the rest of the county.
Thank you, and I seen that as well, but, you know, it's, it's something I think, um, is not widely spoken about as council makes this decision regarding, um, something that we're going to have in place, again, strictly for the city, but not for town of Elgoma, town of Black Wolf. Um, we've spent a lot, a lot of time this past year on this, and to one of the citizen's statements earlier, I agree. As the mayor and I had talked to Mark, it would have been a year ago, March, uh, because we didn't know what we didn't know. But slightly disappointed that we're still using council time at this point when we're talking about a few cases out of sixty-seven thousand.
Well, thanks for your comments, Councilmember Alison Ozby, but, um, you know, as of today, we have had a hundred and eighty-two people that have passed away from COVID in the county, and certainly, um, I, I don't, I don't believe it's a waste of council's time for us to prevent any future deaths. Councilmember Ford.
I'd like to make a motion to have the expiration date for this, uh, ordinance be April thirtieth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Erickson, second, any discussion, any further discussion on April thirtieth? Amending, or amending the current ordinance, uh, under review to April thirtieth as the termination date or review? All right, let's take the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Alison Ozby.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Mookrour.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Period six.
And just a point of clarification, then, uh, City Attorney. So we have now placed that date, uh, that specific date for the amendment and will now consider it fully amended, correct?
Correct, now you would vote on the ordinance as amended to include that date.
All right, shall we have a, uh, roll call on the ordinance as amended?
Ford.
Mad, oh, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Mookrour, yes.
Sorry.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I don't have much on this, um, you know, Councilmember Alison Ozby noted, we've spent a considerable amount of time on this. And in the end, it's entirely unneeded. We have a, uh, state mandate in place that is doing exactly what you want it to do. Uh, I, and honestly, I'm going to, I'm going to quote, uh, County Board Chairman Shiloh Ramos, because he said it very well, uh, two weeks ago at the county board meeting when they voted down, uh, affirming the county health director's guidance and proposal. The quote, "I don't recommend this approach and the timing. First of all, I think it's unnecessary at this time. We have a statewide mask mandate right now. If you already have a mandate that's achieving the goal, I question the reason for putting this in, this in place," end quote. And that's really, I question the reason for putting this in place. This shouldn't even been on the docket again, I'm going to rehash that. That staff decided to put this on the, uh, agenda two weeks ago. Council did not request it. Council's guidance was very specific several months ago, and that it not been brought back until the state mandates, the governor's order was repealed or, uh, no longer valid. Um, so unless you're saying the governor's order's not valid, uh, I question the need for this, because we have one in place, it's working. The governor's indicated he's going to expand it or, uh, extend it another sixty days, which would put us into May. And, um, it's doing what it's supposed to do. So, uh, we do not need this on the books in the city of Oshkosh at this time, and, uh, so I'll be voting no on this one. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, we're making record time, so I am going to waste a little bit of your time. Maybe I'll be long-winded here. But first off, thanks everyone who emailed and reached out for their, uh, their feedback over the last two weeks. Um, been thinking a lot about this last year. Um, and I think it's fair to say we're all exhausted with this issue, we're exhausted by COVID, uh, we're eager to get back to normal. Um, I think we all have different risk tolerances, and I'm not talking about us as a council, I'm talking about us as a community, uh, risk tolerances when it comes to COVID. And I think we all sense we're close, close to the end here. I, I've been consistent, I try to be consistent through this whole thing, that I, I do think a mask policy is a logical approach. I, I really struggle with this because I, it does feel, I, I can't argue with what Councilmember, uh, Hoogrour said. It does feel a little bit illogical the way we are, uh, going about this. As much as I'd like to point to that process, I just can't, because I do support the policy at the end of the day. And I kind of go back to basic management strategy for any of my students who I'm sure are listening here and have heard me lecture on this. You know, we have to stay aggressive, we have to seize the initiative, and to me, that's the vaccinations, that's love Oshkosh, that's all the stuff we've been doing to have those awesome numbers that were, were just quoted to us, to have only twenty-five percent. I mean, that means we're disproportionately doing better than those outside of the city, which is, which is great. Uh, but we also have to protect our, protect our flank and protect our gains. And, you know, that's what, uh, my dog's liking what I'm saying here. Uh, that's what the, uh, the mask policy hopefully does, even though it's strictly, um, a backup. I'm very glad, thankful we didn't waive the first reading. Um, I think there's a value to, to what council, um, or what City Manager Roloff said earlier, that we're going through a regular process with this, and it won't be something we come back to, um, very quickly and kind of try to ram down your throats. Um, but yeah, this one's just particularly hard, because there is a segment of our population, uh, that sees this as government overreach, as an attack on, on personal liberty. Um, I do think that's the minority opinion, but I also don't think that I'm here to, to, to represent only the majority opinion here. I think a debate over the size and scope and reach of our government is entirely appropriate. Um, on that front, I think it's important that whatever we do do as a government, we try to do it well. So to that end, uh, this mandate, I think, can provide continuity if the state mandate goes away. If we've learned anything from our, our state, uh, legislature and governor lately, it's that inconsistency is the name of the game. I'm really happy that we have that timeline on April thirtieth. I, I think it would be irresponsible for us to have passed something without a timeline. Honestly, at the end of the day, I guessing this will probably not even go to effect, because as Councilmember Mookrour said, uh, the governor has been very clear, um, and the Supreme Court has not really had an appetite for taking this up. I want to point out that we have various exemptions here. The, uh, the, the resident who earlier had, had spoken against the mandate, um, was discussing some of the issues, um, a family, I believe a family member had had breathing with, with a mask, and I want to make clear that, that we have exemptions for medical conditions, including for those who struggle to breathe with a mask. So I, I, I said this before at our previous meeting, but I say it again, I absolutely implore my fellow residents to choose kindness and empathy rather than judgment when you encounter somebody not wearing a mask. And that, whether we pass this thing tonight or not, that, that's so important, because, you know, you have to assume those not wearing a mask have a reason. Doesn't do any good to, 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 to choose that negative path. I recognize that the opposition to a mandate does not equate to rejecting science or not caring about public health. I really truly believe, and through my conversations with, uh, many people who have been vehemently against this, it's a question of process and method, and there is a question about, about, or a concern about the ambiguity. We don't, right, there's a lot we don't know about COVID, and that's just, there's an ambiguity there that is uncomfortable when we're trying to translate it into the language of mandates. And finally, those in opposition, I don't know, I know that government trust isn't really in vogue right now. But I can say personally, I have no aims on your personal liberty. You know, I, I pledge to do my best to avoid a situation where the state mandate goes away because we have herd immunity, but somehow we still have something in place. Um, I certainly don't want to, want to confirm the concerns of those who question, uh, the intent of those of us who are, who are pushing this mandate, and I'll certainly do my best. And I guess finally, I really keep getting those vaccines, you know. Let's get to herd immunity and, and let's be done with this thing. We have so much, so much, so much good stuff we need to do, uh, in the city, and I think Councilwoman Alison Ozby was right, that we've spent a lot of time on this. And, um, that always comes with an opportunity cost. So that was long-winded, but like I said, we're making a record time. So, uh, so thank you, and I'll, I'll shut up now.
Councilmember Alison Ozby.
Thank you, I just wanted to make a point of clarification. You know, a lot, a lot of my opposition is the singling out of the city of Oshkosh when the county who actually has a health department, um, certainly you would think would be second in line. And while I respect the position of mayor, I certainly don't appreciate the insinuation that my comments had anything to do with the fact that I would ever, ever, at any point, think that any deaths within Winnebago County is acceptable.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you, I'll just, um, I'll make mine quick, too. Uh, but I want to echo what Councilmember Ford had said, um, and thanks to everyone who reached out and shared their opinions with us. Uh, this is something that I had hoped that we wouldn't have to talk about again, but, uh, that the state would provide us some stability and consistency, but we've seen that that is not always the case. Um, it, it feels like we're kind of on edge, not knowing if these safety measures will be in place each day. Uh, and we're so close to the finish line. I hope that this ordinance doesn't have to be enacted, that, um, the state will be able to continue having their statewide mask mandate until it's no longer needed. And we have enough people vaccinated, but we're not there yet. So we're so close to the end of this with more and more vaccines coming out, we just have to stay the course to get through this and not trip before the finish line. Uh, we all want to go back to normal. Um, our public institutions, our schools, our library businesses depend on having these types of safety measures in place in order to stay open. So I think this is our responsibility to provide some consistency if the state is not able to do that. So I'll just close, we're, we're so close, let's, uh, not trip before the finish line and, uh, not keep pushing the end date of this pandemic out further.
And, uh, Mr. Guerin, could you just talk a little bit about what the finish line looks like for us so that we can reach a point where we don't need to continuously, uh, revisit this? What, what does the finish line, what is that number, many people are asking?
I wish I could give you a precise answer to that, but one is not available. There is clearly a lot we still don't know. Estimates are sixty to, sixty to ninety percent of the population. More commonly, we hear seventy to eighty percent. Right now, you know, we're at about eleven percent that are, uh, completely vaccinated. And it's going to take us, uh, months to increase that number even to the, you know, the sixty to seventy percent threshold. Uh, not to mention that we don't have a vaccine yet that we can use in our community for persons under age sixteen. So that's a whole chunk of the population that isn't eligible for vaccination just yet. I believe that we'll see, uh, vaccine for ages perhaps, uh, as young as twelve yet later this year. But it may certainly be next year before we have that. We are seeing rapid gains right now, um, in decreases of hospitalizations and serious illnesses. We have vaccinated over seventy percent of those persons aged sixty-five and up at this point. So this week really marked, uh, a, a jump in the, in the sixty-five to seventy-four-year-olds and almost matched them. And so we're doing. And so we're doing very well there. So we're trying to protect our most vulnerable first. Vaccine is starting to increase in, in allocation. We're going to be receiving our first Johnson and Johnson vaccine next week. And I expect that within a month, we'll have far more vaccine than, than we're going to have people, you know, looking for it at our vaccination clinics. And we're already seeing a slowdown in requests for vaccine amongst the eligible groups. So we're just expanding now into the rest of the 1B, which should really help. And then I suspect that we'll probably be seeing movement by the end of the month on individuals with underlying health conditions at younger ages. The state has not made a determination on that yet, so we are waiting for that. But certainly in the next, you know, 30 to 45 days, anybody that wants a vaccine should hopefully be able to start scheduling an appointment to get it. And then I would hope that even just within, you know, the next two to three months, that we'll have made great progress and, and hopefully not see an increase in cases. Our biggest concern right now is complacency. While cases are low, the, the variant, variants of, that are more communicable are circulating and they're increasing exponentially, even though they represent a fairly small proportion of cases. They're on a very, very rapid rise. And then, and so things like masking and distancing really need to stay in place. CDC has offered us very encouraging news. You know, in, in terms of our small group gatherings and not wearing masks if we're with other vaccinated people or, you know, just a single unvaccinated family member that is, is protected because those around them are largely vaccinated. And I, I think we'll, you know, we'll see, you know, continued, you know, deconstruction of the, of the requirements that are in place right now throughout the summer. So we're certainly very optimistic for our community as a whole. We met with EAA today, talked about their plans at the end of July. And, you know, while we may still certainly have a need for masks at that point, we certainly expect things to be far more open than they are right now. So. Mayor Paul Mary, I appreciate the opportunity to, to, to address the council. I wish I had more specific information for you at this time, but we're definitely headed in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Guren. Councilmember Hoogarower.
Thank you, Mayor. It'll be brief because I appreciate you actually asking that question. Because that's one of my biggest pet peeves in this, is that there is no end line. There is no goal put on this, this ordinance we're passing. And that, just like anything else that's happened in the last year, the goal will continue to be moved. And it's not being tied to anything. It's going to be when four council members feel comfortable taking their masks off is when the city of Oshkosh's will be repealed. That's, that in a nutshell is when this will get taken off our books. And that's extremely concerning to me, that there is no specific data. There is nothing specific at all that will trigger this coming off our books until four people who are uneducated, ill-prepared for this discussion on pandemics and public health decide that they're comfortable taking theirs off. That's, that's very concerning to me. So appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoogarower. Other councilmembers. All right, let's go ahead and take the roll then, as amended on 21-128.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
No.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Hoogarower.
No.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curate four two.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. And thank you to those who spoke earlier and have emailed. We'll now move into our new ordinances. 21-129 is a new ordinance that will take no action on this evening. Approve zone change from urban mixed-use district with a university transition overlay to institutional district with a university transition overlay for parcels west of 417 Algoma Boulevard. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there any discussion on this pending new ordinance? All right. I, I believe, Mr. Davis, are you still with us?
Absolutely.
Or Mr. Lyons? This is in relation to the Salvation Army expansion, correct?
Yes, this would be the zoning required for the four lots to the west of the current Salvation Army parcel. You can see on the map, this would rezone the four parcels to the west so they can expand their building and build a parking lot to the west.
Thank you for having that map at the ready. Appreciate it. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to new resolutions. Resolution 21-130, approve tax increment district number 40. Project plan designate tax increment district number 40 boundaries. Create tax increment district number 40 Miles Kimball. Redevelopment Plan Commission recommends approval. We have a motion and a second, please.
Move. One second.
Hoogarower and Ford. All right, discussion. Councilmember Hoogarower.
Thank you, Mayor. It'll be brief, you know, to the applicants. I want to, you know, I want to thank you for your, and I think you're still on the call too. I want to thank you guys for, for trying to move forward with this project. You know, this one in particular for me, the TIF, it, it's not a while for me, but I absolutely get it. And it's, I'm fully, and I'm supportive of it. This will, this will remove a white elephant or a big white box from a corner. And hopefully it, it's a catalyst for something else, that it does move the needle in that area. That's a huge area for us in this community that we need something big. And if this helps that, then I'm on board. So appreciate you guys and all your effort working with city staff to get this, this put together. I wish you best of luck in the project and, and can't wait to see something else on that corner other than our current situation. So best of luck.
Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. And I would like to concur with councilmember Hoogarower. And in full transparency, since we obviously knew this was coming on the agenda, I've gone maybe a couple blocks out of my way to drive by and was really pleased to see some activity going on and actually, and people there. And so certainly different than in the past when we had heard that that area was, was going to be redone. So again, thank you and best of luck. And glad that you had such a positive experience working through the process with staff in the city of Oshkosh.
All right. And I do believe that, you know, certainly, while I may not necessarily be as optimistic that this is going to be catalytic in nature, I do believe that in collaboration and in connection with some of the other projects that are starting to take shape down there, that it certainly, the addition of some additional housing at different price points is going to help infuse the area and strengthen that neighborhood. So I'll certainly be supporting this this evening. Anyone else? All right, please take the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Hoogarower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curate six.
All right, thank you. Next we have a resolution 21-131. Approve economic development forgivable loan program, $60,000. Long-range finance committee recommends approval. Do we have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ford and Erickson. Yes, discussion, please. Uh, let's see here. Alan, Mr. Davis, would you, or do we have Mr. Van Campel still? Who would like to speak a little bit about what this does?
I'll lead off if that's okay.
Yes.
The city works very closely with Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation, Jason White and his staff. And we've worked on several projects over the years. In one particular case, very specific cases we come across. We can't find an existing method to help attract or retain high-paying jobs in the city of Oshkosh. So we've seen what the competition has been offering them, both in-state and out-of-state. And we've, we've come up with a rather small program to help make those, close those deals for the city of Oshkosh. So we're expecting this to be an infrequent type of use, but could be very, very powerful, given the right circumstances. It's relatively small, but it'll have a big impact on the jobs created and the investment by the businesses in Oshkosh. So we think it has a lot of good economic impact for the city when it comes to tax base and earnings and employment. So we think this is just another tool in our toolbox to help attract and retain high-paying jobs in the city of Oshkosh.
And is it my understanding this is a kind of a one-time thing?
That's.
Or is it a pilot that we would intend on bringing this back?
Us, we think this is going to be very infrequent. That's why we're only allocating $60,000 right now. And at this point in time, we might have a project coming through, down the pipeline. But every once in a while, we want to have this in our back pocket in case we need to pull it out and win, win the project for Oshkosh. So it would be infrequent is what I would describe it as.
Okay, other questions, discussion? Councilmember Ford.
I just want to quickly say that GoEDC has had a great track record on these types of economic development programs in our community. So I have every confidence that, that this modest investment will be, will be used well.
All right, very good. Let's call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Hoogarower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curate six.
All right, next we have a new resolution 21-132, creation of an Oshkosh poet laureate program. And as I asked council to consider this previously, the library board has an interest in partnering and actually creating a panel for vetting this. And I suppose we should first go ahead and get a motion and a second for discussion here.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Crowsey and Erickson. So now discussion. And I believe Amy Albright may be on the call as well. I'm not sure if Jeff Gilerson-Dewey is available. But I just want to thank council. This, this may seem like a small thing, but it's certainly an exciting, small program that I think can offer a little bit of glimmer to some of our short-term future and can also put us on the map in terms of some arts and culture that other cities have done as well. We also have state poet laureate. I had the opportunity to be part of a program with Ellen Court up in Appleton. She's since passed, but if you get a chance, take a peek at the Ellen Court Peace Park and their poetry garden MSA-created park space up there. Is Amy on the call here? Oh, there she is. Hi, Amy. And Amy volunteered to speak regarding the CBB and how they see this being an asset to the community.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, I just wanted to say that when I heard this idea, the poet laureate, I just, we had been talking about different ways that poetry could be intertwined in the city. And so I think there is some marketability to this. I think what Lori said, you know, this isn't like a huge thing that's going to drive, you know, a ton of tourism and we're going to just break the bank with, you know, people coming in to celebrate poetry. But I think it's another point of pride for the city. And I think all of those things are important as we talk about how we, how we market the city and all the things that we have with the arts. I think this is something that adds to that. So last year when COVID started, we did run a poetry contest. We had about 100 entries from everybody, from kids to adults. And we just kind of did it for, honestly, for something to get people engaged. We just kind of threw it out there. But I think there's a lot of legs to it. I think the library is a great partner in this. And we would really look at just sort of marketing it from a way that sort of just adds another feather to our cap in the arts, in the arts space. I think it offers opportunities for, you know, poetry workshops, you know, poetry readings events. We had talked about, there's a lot of communities that are stamping poetry into like sidewalks and just, you know, just kind of like cool, just another cool factor for the city, if that makes sense. So, you know, I definitely, I agree with Lori. I don't think this is, you know, a crazy major thing. But I think on the same hand, it's kind of fun to have fun, cool things to celebrate. And I think it'd be a pretty simple, a simple thing to do. So if there's a poet laureate and whatever happens with that, I'm here to say that we will help market that.
Yes, and certainly, you know, the, the aspect of promoting literacy in the community as well. You know, that was a really big influencer. I think many millions of people were inspired by Amanda Gorman, our nation's poet laureate at the inaugural poem that she wrote and read in, in her early twenties, just influenced many people. So certainly I believe that there's some interest in possibly having a, an event at the William Waters Plaza as well, if this is created. And I see that councilmember Ford has a question.
Yeah, just questions quickly. Presumably it will have to be an Oshkosh resident and will it be open to kids as well? Or have you gotten that far?
Yes. So that discussion, actually in the meeting with the, the library staff and with Amy, you know, we, we brought that up and there was some discussion about, we'd like to first seek out Oshkosh residents for consideration and application in that. And part of the poet laureate's responsibilities are to be somewhat of a, you know, an ambassador for poetry out in the community, in educational settings, in schools and in other gatherings. And especially, you know, promoting youth literacy as well. So the, the, one of the things that still hasn't been, you know, determined yet is, you know, how long the term would be. I think the recommendation, you know, could be something like a two-year term, similar to some of our other appointments. But thank, those are really good questions. And we would leave that up to the library board to vet out those, those particulars though, if, if council's comfortable with that. Other discussion? All right, let's take the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Present.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Hoogarower.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curate five, one present.
All right, then. Next we have council discussion and direction to city manager, future agenda items. City manager, future workshops. I believe we have a tentative agenda for that meeting with local legislators for March 11th.
Yes, we do. I appreciate the input that we got from council members. So the, the draft agenda, or not the draft, it's, this is the agenda, is on page 306 of your packet this evening. Budget process, COVID, anything related to COVID. The Department of Corrections, Management and Transitional Living Facilities. I think it's our opportunity to talk about concerns that are state-related and just express it at the local level. Housing, including homelessness and some of the housing proposals that are in the budget. And then state regulation of marijuana. We've kind of said two hours, so we got to budget our time. I was informed that even though Senator Fein will not be able to make the meeting, he will have a representative of his office present in the, in the Webex. will, uh, have a representative of his office, uh, present in the, uh, in the Webex room, uh, during the discussion. So appreciate, uh, his staff member reaching out to, uh, to participate in that meeting. So that's what I have for that and looking forward to a, a very good discussion on a lot of relevant topics.
All right, so we are not adding any more scope creep or any other items to that two hour session at this point, right?
We won't get home if we don't, if we add more, so.
Yes, yes. Uh, and the other item here is a proposal for large item pickup with regards to, um, over the last couple of years, you know, periodically you'd hear from community members who have either moved here from other cities or know other people who live in other cities that have large item pickup, um, either included in some way, either on an annual basis and in those being, you know, items that can't fit in your garbage can, uh, that, you know, need to go to the landfill and such. And, uh, so I had checked out a couple of cities and what they were doing. It varies from, you know, an annual to a monthly pickup. Some go every other week. Others give out a certain number of tickets when the tax bill is paid, uh, so that residents can dispose of those large bulky items. And I appreciate the, the matrix that was put together that went beyond the four cities that I contacted, um, that staff put together and some of the cost estimates. I think council saw that in your packet. There was a reference to costs that related to a monthly pickup. And, uh, you know, it, it appears that that might be a bit ambitious, uh, but certainly wanted to hear from council what your thoughts are about having a citywide, um, annual large item pickup. Council, uh, deputy mayor Crowsey.
Thank you, mayor. I co-sponsored this with you because a lot of people don't have access to vehicles to take stuff to the dump. Um, I like the idea of the sticker program that's included with the taxes every year that gives, allows people to have that opportunity to throw stuff away in a larger size. And looking at the matrix, Oshkosh is behind compared to other cities with the, the ease of access of removal of large items. So I'll support some kind of a program that we come up with.
Two things. First, I want to point out that, um, my neighborhood association had a nice kind of pickup day like this, that when it was run through the association, it worked really well. So that mean that could be a vehicle, uh, for implementing something like this, but I know the entire city's not, um, not, not represented by neighborhood associations, which I guess leads to my question for city staff. I mean, are we, do we have the capacity to do this or do you know what that would entail?
I asked Mr. Robbie to do this research and, you know, I, I draw to your attention that the communities that are doing this are funding it through a variety of methods that we currently don't have. We, um, we sold our carts, uh, when we started this program. So every resident who, uh, has a cart purchased those and they own them. Some of these communities are, are leasing it for an annual fee that is more than we charged to own them. City of Nina is charging approximately, um, 200, almost $200 a year or over $200 a year annually for a cart that our pair of carts, we charge about $130 and they own them. So they're certainly making money to subsidize other aspects of their refuse program. And I'm certain that that's, that this is one of them. Uh, we eliminated that program when we went to the automated system. We only have a few, I think two or three, uh, rear loader, uh, non-automated garbage trucks. We would have to increase our capacity. The mayor, after seeing these numbers, I think already conceded, well, you know, maybe monthly isn't, uh, isn't what I'm looking for, but, uh, if you're looking for perhaps an annual, I would probably, uh, you know, lean towards doing something along the lines of contracting it out rather than, uh, adding, uh, adding, uh, vehicles to our fleet for a once a year activity. That would be my personal preference. I know that different people may have different opinions. There are concerns about, some of the cities that are doing it currently have talked about undoing it. And that was some of the comments that they gave Mr. Robbie and Mr. Robbie's staff is the one who did the, the research and I would certainly defer to Mr. Robbie for anything he might want to add to that. But there is a funding source that we don't have. Uh, I think we have a recycling fee that's $35 a year. Uh, that really pays for the, the extra cost of recite, the recycling program as the county has been increasing that cost and the revenues from recyclables has, you know, the, the revenue has just collapsed, which has been a large part of, uh, the need for us to have that recycling fee to pay for it. So it's a policy call, but if you wanted to do it, I would suggest you look at a, um, a contracting out rather than having it, uh, as an overtime type of thing or, and buying trucks that I think would just be, uh, not, uh, a good use of capital funds.
I just had a curiosity, Mr. Roloff, um, do you have any sense of like a rough idea of what contracting that out, if we were to do like an annual or a semi-annual event like that would be? And, um, you know, are there, um, I guess particularly special considerations? I mean, if you think about, especially in the central city where we have really dense population census, census tracts and very few garages, um, that, that folks can store that stuff until they can find some means and not everybody has the physical ability to, to get that stuff, um, out of there. Do we have any sense of what a contracted event like that might be?
Uh, no, I don't, but I'll defer, I, and I, I asked, uh, Mr. Robbie that question yesterday. Short answer is no, but James, uh, I know that, uh, you know, I don't think you have an answer either for that specific question, at least at this time.
Not at this time, no. I've, I've reached out to some of our contacts to try to get a, an estimate of what it might be, but we just not have, have not had the time to try to work with them to figure out, you know, what a, an estimate would be to, to bring forward to you.
We could certainly do that and get back to council and, and report back on that.
Councilmember Mooker Hour.
Thank you, mayor. I guess to, to the mayor and to deputy mayor, I'm trying to figure out what problem you're really trying to fix with, with this idea. Um, our system, our system works and it works well. In fact, it works so well that, you know, other communities don't even want to do their own. They're trying to make their way towards the Oshkosh system. I'm trying not to assume that you're creating a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. So I'm asking the question, what, what actual problem are you trying to fix here?
So currently we have a reactive, that's, that's a really good question. I'm glad you asked that, um, councilmember Mooker Hour. So we have a reactive issue, uh, or, or program, I should say, which is, you know, the citation. And, um, you know, there've been a number, and, and I'm sure some of the other council members have gotten, um, some feedback on a number of folks who are kind of making lots or a significant number of complaints regarding junk and debris piling up and that. It's kind of turned into a neighbor, you know, issue, uh, that is not strengthening neighborhoods. And so we end up, you know, dealing with this reactively rather than proactively. And, um, you know, I, I guess this goes back, oh my goodness, at least 10 years, um, having, you know, done neighborhood association walks with our police department and inspections department. And, uh, you know, certainly, uh, there are folks who have the means and the ability to get rid of these items, but with more folks at home, you know, this past year especially, I think we started to see some things pile up and then, you know, snow melts off and, and we're dealing with reaction rather than proactively, hey, let's, let's do a citywide cleanup. So that's where that came from. Yes.
I guess, so it's down a path of the, the cleaning up of the yards is, is what I'm, I guess I'm hearing, the junk debris removal from yards more than, um, just lack of access of getting rid of it. Because all right, now all somebody has to do is if they've got a couch or they got a chair, put it on the fronts, the, the front terrace and it'll get picked up. They can, they can choose to go down to city hall and prepay and save themselves a, an admin fee on top of it. Or, you know, if the garbage men come around, they'll, they'll pick it up and they'll, they'll send you a bill for it. So I guess, um, I see you shaking your head no, but that's exactly the process. If, if you put a, you know, put a couch or a bookcase out on the terrace, the city sanitation is going to come by and pick that thing up for you, uh, real quick and, and issue you a bill for that. So you don't have to make your way up to the, the county landfill. It's a convenience to go out to the landfill where you can save yourself a few bucks if you have the ability, uh, vehicle and physical capabilities. But at this moment, if you've got a piece of junk and you want to get rid of it, put it on the front, the, uh, front terrace and, and we'll find a way, you know, sanitation will take care of that.
And you know what? I'm glad you brought that up, but, uh, it was my understanding that pink tag, and I've, I've seen this happen, pink tags get put on them and it's not picked up unless you pay for the tag. Am I, am I misunderstanding something?
Mr. Robbie here, he's gonna, he's gonna correct us.
Uh, no, I, I don't know that I'm going to correct you. It's, uh, the way I understand the process, if it gets pink tagged, um, on your garbage day, uh, then the supervisor, uh, goes back through the area the following day to make sure it's been taken care of or not. And if not, um, it does get picked up and, um, you not only get the, uh, the fee that you would have if you'd prepaid it, but then you get an administrative fee tacked on to it. So, you know, within a day or two after your garbage day, it is removed and, uh, the property is billed for that removal.
Thank you. So I think we, we both had a little bit of, uh, understanding and, and clarification there. So it doesn't get picked up the first time, but maybe sometime later. And again, another fee and another, you know, again, reactive versus proactive. So, um, not, not meant to necessarily debate it, but I would like to hear from other council members if you have an interest in, in us pursuing a, a program of some sort, uh, maybe at a smaller scale, a, a shorter frequency. All right, well, doesn't look like we have enough interest in advancing that right now. So thank you for considering the topic. So we move on to report of council liaison for boards and commissions.
Thank you. Um, I will just give a, a report up from our rental housing advisory board. Uh, we had our meeting in February. We did approve our 2021 strategic plan and action plan. So just in case anyone in the public isn't familiar with what the city's rental housing advisory board is, uh, the purpose of the board is to advise staff on creating, uh, rental housing, educational materials and training programs for landlords and tenants, uh, and to review, make recommendations regarding city policy changes, uh, related to rental housing. So I'll just give some brief highlights from, uh, the, the goals that the board has for this coming year. Um, some of that includes monitoring the progress of the affordable housing study, uh, that's going on, uh, through the planning department and providing feedback to the consultants that were hired. Uh, monitoring, monitoring the continued need for rental assistance during COVID-19. We've had some regular updates from, uh, Advocap, who's providing that, uh, rental assistance in Winnebago County. Also creating and distributing materials related to, uh, information to educate landlords, renters, general public on issues like renting in Oshkosh, uh, and how the rental housing and, uh, inspection program works. And also just doing some outreach to other groups with similar goals, uh, providing trainings on anti-discrimination, uh, in renting landlord and tenant rights and, uh, recommending policies to address local needs such as landlord and tenant mediation. So those are some of the things, um, that that board will be looking at this year. Um, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Is there anything, uh, county, uh, deputy mayor Crowsey?
Or did you have a question on that one first before I move on to mine? No? Okay. Okay, um, I had traffic review tonight and there was a couple of things we worked on. Uh, we had a request for no parking west side on Cumberland Trail from Ninth Ave to Greenfield Trail for the winter season of November 1st until April 30th. Um, there's a lot of apartments in that area and the city's having a hard time plowing when there's car, when there's not enough parking, um, in the, the lots for people to park. So people have been parking on the streets and that's hard for the plows to get through there over the winter. So, um, we came up with a solution of, um, no parking on the west side of Cumberland Trail from November 1st through April 30th. So it'll be coming to us. Um, the next thing was we reviewed the 2020 crashes compared to 2019 crashes and the bikes, um, bike car accidents, um, went from 16 in 2019 down to 11 incidents in 2020. So there's a positive gain there. And then with pedestrians, it went from 23 in 2019 to 16 in 2020. So the initiatives and goals that we set in council with new stop signs or lights or no turns or whatever have helped. And then the final thing, um, pending projects, the two major road construction for the summer coming up, um, West Ninth Ave from Oakwood Road to Linden Oaks Drive will start on April 12th. And then CP Ave from Bowen Street to Lake Street, um, they're finishing up the bidding process on that right now. So that'll be coming to us for approval too. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Commission met and it was, it was very light and probably the most important thing was, um, us receiving our new, uh, plan commission manuals. Uh, so shout out to city attorney Lawrence and, and, uh, planning services manager Lyons as those, um, you know, state law around planning changes frequently. And those handbooks are just invaluable resource to make sure we do make good decisions when we have heavy agendas. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And then I, as mentioned earlier, uh, for the parks advisory board, uh, much of our discussions centered around the, um, Four Seasons building, uh, which was discussed earlier. And, uh, there was an additional item, uh, talking about, um, moving forward on creating a dinghy kayak, uh, rack rental at, um, Miller's Bay. And so, uh, that was the other item that was significant in the agenda and, um, some of the other updates on, um, tree plantings, spring plantings and that, uh, moving forward. So that's all I have from the parks advisory board. All right, next we have the city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, in your agenda pack, it's a memo regarding, uh, an amendment to a professional services agreement with, uh, MSA Professional Services. Uh, that's, uh, so that MSA can, uh, proceed with the design for the William Waters Plaza, um, gazebo. So we're excited about that and, uh, the idea is to get that done this year. It's, uh, funded out of the Great Neighborhoods Program, so we're real excited about that. COVID-19, I think we've, uh, had a number of discussions tonight, so I don't think I have anything to add on. I don't think Chief Stanley has anything to add except encouraging people to, uh, get their vaccine and continue, uh, doing all the things as, as, uh, council member Erickson said, we're close to the finish line, you know, keep, uh, exercising those, uh, those recommended, um, behaviors and, uh, and, and get this over with for us. But, uh, certainly check out the county's website for, um, for vaccine information, uh, because the quicker we'll get vaccinated, the quicker we get back to normal as well. Outstanding issues, uh, I would, uh, suggest that, uh, there's a lot to talk about on Thursday with the legislators. Um, I think some of the, uh, items relating to homelessness as well as the MSP program are going to be, uh, big topics of discussion. And there may be some follow-up that we'll be, um, at a minimum discussing and, and seeing where we're going after the, um, after Thursday's meeting. So Madam Mayor, that's all I have unless there are any questions from council members.
Councilmembers, any questions? All right then. All right then. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second. Councilmember Mooker Hour and Asby, I don't think we have much discussion on that. So we'll take the roll.
Ford.
Hi.
Alison Asby.
Hi.
Crowsey.
Hi.
Mooker Hour.
Hi.
Erickson. Paul Mary.
Hi.
Period six. We are adjourned.
Night everyone.